You know, you're the shade right now where I could do that. Do you some pink? I could do you some pink.
I know you could. I thought it maybe was brown or something.
Yeah.
Looked like you know what.
No, I like the natural color.
Yeah, it's alright.
I knew we might get any of them while walking over.
Yeah.
My car is alright.
Get you in that walk and roll.
Oh, yeah.
Try to hide it underneath the seat.
Yeah. Break down, break down.
So I'm in a hurry to get into Johnson, I'll be in here.
How are you sitting back there?
How are you doing, Mark? How's everything going?
Hanging in there, buddy.
Oh, he is, isn't he?
I saw Dave Gilkerson tonight. I haven't seen him in a long time.
How's he doing?
He looked great.
And you know, I have not run into him. Well, I did run in the other night. I said Joseph's house. Joe's not back in Brazil now. And I said, you know, I see Mary Louie's home there. Has Mary Louie ever mentioned the brickets? I said, every now and then.
I will call the meeting to order. Please stand with me and give your pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll consider the roll call and introductions complete. And we don't need an executive session. We have the minutes from March the 13th. Meeting, council. I need a motion to accept the minutes as written and presented to you.
You have that motion?
Second.
Oh, second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Diane?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Let's go right down to the village administrator. John, they're on.
I'm sure you're gratified to know that after the tornado apocalypse yesterday, we're still all here, so.
(laughing).
Firearms went off for quite a while.
Yeah, they did like about forty minutes. Oh, wow.
Yeah, as long as the Weather Service says the tornado, and they said there was an indication of cyclonic activity or rotation, that's why they let them off. They have to run for three minutes, two minutes, three minutes, two minutes, until it's over. So it was a little bit nuts. Anyway, the first item that I have some information on is the new water plant roofing. Roofing siding are going well. Should be pretty much closed in by the end of March once the doors are on. Interior walls are being assembled. Expect the delivery date is still August the 17th. If you're interested in looking at the plant, I'd encourage you to go walk through it. You can walk through it anytime you want. Nick, Nick will take you through. He's the site superintendent. And you can see the walls and the production area and a lot of the big equipment going in. It's kinda, kinda neat to look at it as it's being assembled, so. And I'd encourage you to go out and take a look at it, see what progress we're doing. On the streets, we're doing some pothole filling. We've kinda, sorta rebuilt Clevinger and a few other places that had some pretty serious holes in them. So we bought a few tons of cold patch and we're out pounding that in. Even though we're gonna rip Clevinger up in a couple of months, it's still, there were some, there were some tire-losing holes in there, so we fixed those. And any other holes, as you run around the village, you see anything as bigger than a softball, let us know, we'll fill it for you. Got a few more on the list, but we had to let it dry up a little bit today before we could get back at it. The bids for Clevinger were opened on March 20th. We're waiting for the engineer to make a recommendation to the bidder. I think they've actually moved on that, but I'm not sure which one they picked. I wanna say it was Strauss, but I might be off on that, so I'll let you know as soon as I know. The street sign bids were open today. There were two bids, and again, we're waiting for the engineer to make a recommendation on those. So, storm drain, storm sewer. We're meeting with the engineer on Wednesday. There's a storm or a catch basin down toward the end of the sewer plant. We think we can tie in there, but we have to look at it. We think it might be broken in a little bit, 'cause we have some water undercutting some of the dirt and some of the pipes, so we may have to do some other repairs while we're in it. We're gonna find that out on Wednesday. We're hoping to get that started pretty soon. The last item I have is a bit of an update for you on some of the seized inventory from our recent criminal activities. That, that inventory is gonna slowly start coming down here. We'll bring it back down from where it's stored up in London. We filed the deed for the house on March 16th in Jackson. We're anticipating somebody giving us an offer on that house. Then we're gonna, then we're gonna bring that to council along with the other big-ticket items, so council deliberate on those and give me some guidance on how you wanna move. Those pieces are starting to come together, and I'll have a more comprehensive presentation for you on a future date. The one inventory that we're waiting on is not gonna be released from the court until April 15, so we won't even be able to get a court order to put it in our possession until after the 15th. So we're waiting on that. Remaining inventory is a little bit less than we had initially thought it was. We didn't really have good information on what was seized. We only had information on what was being looked for. What was seized and what was looked for was probably about half of what they were looking for, so. We'll have a better inventory of that soon. I'm working with the sheriff's office now to try and get information on that to move that. The intent is to sell all the inventory and recover as much revenue as we can, and then we have to file a notice with the court for the total amount that we recover, so that that is debited against the restitution that's owed. So, that's where we are on that right now. We're moving along on that. We do have to go down to the house here shortly and change some locks, check a couple of things. We have insurance on the house. We're our insurance carrier, so we're good there. That transferred from the county to us. So we now have insurance on it for theft, natural disasters, and fire. No contents, 'cause there's nothing in the house, so. Pending your questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for John?
John, how much restitution? Is there a percentage that goes to him to help him out then on the auction?
Anything that we recover is debited against the $724,000 restitution. There's $724,000 plus or minus a couple hundred bucks.
Okay, okay.
I use that as just a amount. So if we get $250,000 in liquidation, that's reported to the court and it comes off the $724, so the remainder is restitution that he'd still have to make.
Okay.
I had a question. And you said that at some point you will provide council with a detailed list of all the items seized from the investigation? Okay.
Yeah, those items that were purchased erroneously from him, and there's a lot of items that were seized, like registrations for a car and a title for this and a photograph of that, a truck stub over here. Obviously, we're not gonna liquidate that, we're gonna ride through the shredder. But the items that are tangible, I'll have on that list for you. I'm not gonna bother you with a registration for a Ford truck.
No.
That means nothing.
No, just those value.
Tangible items that can be sold for recovery.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So what? Can you give us some idea of what some of the big-ticket items are?
Sure.
Hold on, let me finish. That you say we're looking for that we may not be able to seize?
No, there was, during the investigation, a number of items that were gleaned
Part of the felonies?
Were gleaned from purchase prices and reports and information that was found during investigative interviews, like he would have this or have that or something else.
Or have bought this or that.
Right, and so that list was the things that the, that the state was looking for when they raided the house and seized everything. In fact, some of the items that were being looked for, like the Hellcat, the red Hellcat car, nowhere to be found. A couple, three different firearms, nowhere to be found. So what was actually seized versus what they were looking for in a search warrant is actually significantly different. Does that make sense?
How significant, yeah, it does make sense.
About a half of what I think they were probably looking for?
A half?
Maybe a little over a half.
So monetarily speaking, then?
If you get up in the $225,000 along with the bond, you're gonna probably be lucky. The house went for $135,000. One of the cars was $7,500, another one was $3,500.
Well, the house, you're saying, but you're still waiting on an offer for the house?
Yes, I'm waiting on an offer for the house. Well, actually, the people whose parents actually owned the house originally would like to buy it back, and I asked them to send me a written offer on it. And then I'm probably gonna, I know what it's sold for.
Are we using a realtor?
We have not chosen to use a realtor yet, but I'm not done with trying to get an appraisal on the house. The question is whether we spend $500 or $600 on getting an actual market appraisal or whether we talk to the realtor who had it listed to determine whether that's gonna be the case. If the offer comes in significantly lower than what value we find, then we're probably gonna have to give it to an auction or actually put it with a realtor.
And pay the commission? 'Cause I thought that we, I thought that we had decided we did wanna go with the realtor at our, the finance committee a couple times.
That was, I think, before we knew that there was perhaps a buyer which would save us commission fees. But I think it all depends on the price that is offered for the house.
Right, we don't even have, that's intangible at this point. They might offer us $300,000, they might offer us $80,000. I don't know where we're gonna be. That's why when I get all of that information together, I'll bring it to you, and if it just doesn't taste good, then we'll move to a different process.
Exactly, okay.
I'm not gonna make any of those decisions. That's strictly up to you as to whether you're comfortable with it or you wanna go with a realtor. You put it with a realtor, it might take six months to sell it, I don't know. It might be valued higher than people are willing to spend, and then you sit on a house for a while. So you have to balance whether you wanna own a house in a very displaced area that we have to go down and maintain so we, as soon as the grass starts growing and we have to make sure nobody's throwing rocks through the windows. There's a lot of logistics involved. So we'll know better when I get the offer and when I get everything in our hands, and then I'll bring you a comprehensive list of where we think the values are.
Because we're not gonna get any offers until we actually put it on the market.
That's.
So you may have someone.
Other than that one, that's correct, absolutely.
You've got one offer from one person, but that's without the property even being listed.
That's correct.
So.
And I didn't say we sold it, I just said we have an offer. I'm with you, you know.
Okay.
We cover what we can, but then we have to understand the logistics and the timeframes involved, and you may, if you can list it for $180 and someone wants to give you $160, then you may wanna take the money.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
So we'll know that better when we see what the offer is. And then I'll let you know, and then same with the cars. I have a couple of people interested in some of the cars. They're lower-ticket items than I had thought, because both of them are what they.
Where are, where are the cars?
I do have the cars in our possession at our garage right now. We got them Friday.
So which ones do we have?
We have the 2008 Charger, 2008 Mustang, and the 2013 Cruze. And then we have the motorcycle, lawnmower, some other equipment.
And the truck? Or is that the?
The truck is a $62,000 loan, and Ford Credit has claimed to take it back, and the judge has ordered it back to Ford.
They are gonna take the truck back?
Unless you wanna spend $62,000 and pay the loan off.
No, I'm not saying that, but that, yeah. I'm just wondering where that is at this point.
Yeah, the sheriff's office just basically advised me to not even bother, and the state prosecutor caused the, well, let me say it differently. Ford Motor Credit advised the state prosecutor that they were claiming the truck.
And we have paperwork on this?
Yes, yeah, we have court ordered, the court ordered, ordered it back to Ford. So we do have all that paperwork. I got a whole file I'm working on it. So all the legal documents and all the court orders and all the postings and the sentence and the whole dossier that I have to put together, a big fat book for us.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Max, credit?
Yeah, just one thing. I don't know if anybody today received a flyer that was going around about a missing 15-year-old. She has been located, she's home safe, so just so you know that.
Okay, Mark?
Briefly, all I wanted to say is that three meetings ago, we agreed to accept the cash reconciliation for January the 3rd, or January 2013 through April 2016. I believe that the finance committee chairman is going to talk a little bit about using POs and the need for POs. I cannot express enough how important it is that we develop a PO system that works and keeps up the cash reconciliation where it needs to be. And I know that she'll be talking about that a little later.
Mary Lou is gonna speak to that. All right, Bonnie?
Nothing.
Finance? Mary Lou, you wanna go now or what?
Well, Rebecca, do you wanna go? And then when you're finished, I will go through what we discussed.
Okay, I'll go through some of these other things, some of the standard things first. In your packet, you should have several listings. The payment listing, a receipt listing, and a cash summary by fund. I can tell you that with the payment listing, all of these warrants listed were reviewed and initialed by at least two members of the finance committee. And, so what I would like to do at this time, unless you have any question, I would like a motion to approve the payment listing, the receipt listing, the cash summary by fund, and to pay the bills for March of 2017.
Yeah, the payment listing, as read, $32,340, 44. Motion by Rebecca?
Well, I'll second it then.
Second it.
I just, I just had a question, and I did initial off all the bills that were in the conference room on my way.
Yeah, those aren't on here.
Oh, they're not on there?
No.
Okay, but, you know, our initials were asked for, for the bills.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wanted to know, on one of them, I thought before they're paid, I did have a question.
Yeah, those, this is the ones that we had initialed prior. They weren't the ones that we've initialed today.
Okay, some of them, though, were backdated.
Well, I have, that's part of what I wanted to discuss here in a little bit. Because one of the things that, as Lowell and Mark referred to, is that we have got to get clear-cut procedures into place that finance committee and everyone must follow. And this is just really critical to the ongoing running of the village. And really, at this point, there was a wonderful email sent out by Cindy that I'd like to, if you could please read it, Mary Lou.
Okay, I had some questions, and it went right along with what Diane was asking. And, oh, and I'm still driving the same car. As it, as it goes, Thursday through Monday, before each council meeting, the finance committee, and we did this in 2016, it hadn't been done for quite a while. But it's important for people to understand, Max, that what we're looking at tonight for the payment listing, those were signed, like, what, two weeks ago? They're for the old bills.
Two weeks ago, yes.
Nothing that has transpired since this
Correct.
has been issued to us to sign off and vote for this.
That's right.
So, and that's why I'm glad you mentioned that all of the things that we see on this listing sheet are indeed those things that have been signed, they've been gone through. Most of the time, even Lowell goes through and adds his initials, so we'll know he saw it as well. And to address those questions, Cindy did put together a very brief thing that I can walk you through. And she says, "As your fiscal officer, I can guarantee you that the payment listing that is in your packet has been signed by me to certify funds are in the fund line item and will cover the purchase. There is at least two, should be, there are at least two of the finance members that have signed and approved the purchase order and voucher for me to issue a warrant. There is always my signature on the check with either the mayor's or village administrators. All payments are on your list. I pay bills twice a month, and that is all." Here is the proper procedure, and this is what goes to what Mark was saying. The employee with the approval of the village administrator gets an estimate or quote from the vendor. The employee with the estimate quote requests the fiscal officer to certify the funds are available with a purchase order. Then it goes to the finance committee for their approval. Once I have at least two of the three finance members approved to purchase, then the employee may proceed to place order. The current three members of the finance committee are Rebecca, Diana, and Dave. The mayor's approval on the purchase order does not count, meaning as those signatures. We need to implement the correct procedure ASAP, as when the state comes down, that will be a requirement. The only exception to this would be payments to Columbia Gas and AEP, and I only pay those bills with a PO and voucher signed by finance. I will let council, mayor, and Mark decide if there needs to be legislation in place for this procedure. And if you want to include bank reconciliation, that would be great. If you look at the bank records reconciliation, you will notice there are signatures for the governing body. Unfortunately, the village has not been reconciled for so many years. And I am sure you have not seen a bank reconciliation statement from the UAN system. The reason for the governing body to approve and sign the bank reconciliation is so you will know that the bank is reconciled with the UAN system. And there again, that points to the importance of the interviews that'll be tomorrow.
Right.
UAN experience is almost a given. It's more than, like the mayor said last month, it's more than adding, subtracting, multiplying, and dividing. There's a whole poopot of stuff you've got to know how to do. So these answered my questions, and I'm hoping that this helps make everything else a little more clear. And I can't say enough, and the reason that I mentioned at the last meeting is say, "Well, what did they do all last year?" Well, we worked up to this. We could not culminate these practices until there was a sentence conferred upon the young man. We didn't have the ability, either through state auditing or local auditing. So no, this is not all new. It has taken us a year and three months in order to get to the point that we are now. And the people on the finance committee now are just doing an exemplary job. I can't say enough about the confidence I have in these people, and I know the mayor feels the same way as, as does Mark. And Cindy, as always, did a perfect job with this to help answer any questions that might occur.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, Rebecca, thank you.
Thank you very much for explaining all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the payment listing and a second. And Mary Lou made the discussion, so I'm ready to roll call the vote.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Also in your hands, you have the receipt listing. So I have, when you're accepting the receipt listing, you have the cash flow summary by fund and the cash summary by fund. Those three, four pieces of legislation that we want in the minutes.
So moved.
Mary Lou gave me the motion to, for you, I need a second.
I'll second.
Roll call vote on those three issues, three documents.
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on finance?
Just one, one quick thing, if I may, Rebecca.
Sure.
We have found out, of course, over the last year and so many months, that credit card was a big issue.
Go ahead.
And I would like to let everybody know that those records, we don't know. You know, they had to be gotten again from the company issuing the credit cards. In the future, with a credit card, what do we have? One that's never been, we don't have any right now.
No, we don't have, not any.
And this, a lot of this is gonna help the people who are gonna be sitting in these chairs next year, that the credit card info, an itemized credit card bill, should be looked at by council or at least finance committee.
Okay.
So that we don't end up with several thousand dollars that we didn't even know where it was.
Exactly.
So that's just a suggestion.
Are you giving me that as a motion?
I would like to, yes.
All right, I have that as a motion.
I'll second that, absolutely.
All right, we have no credit card now, but in the future, this rule would go in effect.
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion on it? Roll call vote?
Mary Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, anything else for finance?
Yes, I have one other item, and that is, I do wanna call for another finance work session. There were some items that have come up recently. It has to do with procedures. I wanna make sure that everything is being followed to a T as recommended by Cindy. I know that there have been some discussions that have come up. So I'd like to see if people are available. Work session means all of council's invited, the public is invited. I'm suggesting Thursday at 5:30.
Good for me.
And I would like to see if that might work for.
Good for me?
I'm on it.
Mark, how about you?
Woo, I love meeting on Thursday. How about you, Mark?
Okay, wonderful.
Take notice, then, that we've called a special meeting for Thursday.
Thursday at 5:30.
5:30, this week. Finance, work session, whatever.
And I'd like to mention, too, all of these extra things that the council and the mayor, all these things, we're not charging. I mean, this is just over and above. We only get paid for the Monday deal. And I'm not complaining about it, that's part of the thing that you take on.
That's right.
But in case you're wondering, no, we don't call meetings to get paid.
Not at all.
I'd like to make that motion, but I won't.
Well, actually, you know, back when, long, many years ago.
Yes.
Council members did get paid for special meetings.
They sure did, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, back, oh, you know, eons ago in the.
Okay, the next would be park and recreation and the festival.
Well, I did, I did have one question, though, for Rebecca.
Yes.
Just so I can be clear.
Okay.
Because like I said, I was signing a lot of stuff today that had purchase orders. So the things that there are purchase orders on, none of those items have been processed or, you know, services paid or, or anything?
They don't get paid until finance approves them.
Approves them, okay. So then, for example, the PO for printing the baseball brochures? That work hasn't been, the brochures haven't been printed?
Yeah, they're printed.
They haven't been paid.
Well, surely the vendor's gonna expect to be paid, being Wilson Printing, so we're kind of obligated to pay a $210 bill in there because, you know, I just don't see any point in this process if it's going to have integrity. How can we have the vendor or whomever do the work for $210 when that PO has not been signed off on by enough?
And that's part of the reason I wanna do the finance work session, is there's questions like that, when I said procedural-type questions that have come up. There's some that I have questions about also.
We talked about that this afternoon, we're getting it all ready, so that's what we need to do.
But then, along that vein, I was gonna question that bill anyway. It's a little late now to question the bill, because the work's been done, and we owe Wilson Printing $210. But I was going to just ask the question, the propriety of using village funds to pay for something for a, basically, another nonprofit, where nonprofit?
Parks and Rec.
That's Parks and Rec. We discussed it in our year-end, it's in our, when we had a Parks and Rec year-end meeting. It was discussed in that, too.
Well, how can we then pay for things under the Youth Athletic Association?
It's not for the Youth Athletic Association.
It's baseball brochures.
No, it isn't.
No, it's not.
That's what it said on the.
It's football camp.
Well.
Same difference, so.
For the Parks and Rec football camp.
Okay.
Which is what we discussed at year-end, also on Parks and Rec. This is not for the youth.
So it doesn't come out of the youth athletic?
Not at all.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to ask a question about, 'cause I wasn't sure.
Park and Recreation, the Festival Committee report, and the park.
I did not go to the festival meeting, Dave.
Oh, the festival, we talked about the parade route. It's gonna start on New Street. This'll be the first time we attempted a parade starting in the evening, which, and we brought up, Jack brought up about the football program, and he brought posters of what we're gonna have on the banners. And the banners look pretty neat, I gotta tell you, they look good. And we discussed some of the banders. They'll be definitely uptown with the business association. They all talked about what they wanted to do. Some will be in the gym and talked about what the library's bringing, the chart tank from Cincinnati, which will give the kids a chance to pet a penguin, so that should be pretty interesting, if you've ever met a penguin, so...
There's your chance.
And so it should be interesting. And they mentioned about the programs, and we're, and right now, we're working on getting a couple of bands to come and, of course, the trivia show, but that's the main discussion.
Okay. Tri-County Fire Department?
We'll have a meeting Wednesday, the 29th.
Again, please, Wednesday what?
Wednesday, 29th.
All right.
At 8:00 P.M.
Sterling Joint Ambulance District?
Okay, meeting April the 12th at 8:00. They're always open to the public.
Pleasant Township?
Another quick meeting, March 20th. They just talked in general about a road closing notice, which actually was not even in our township, but just general information. It's actually around Range Township, but just, they're on those things. And then, the C.D.L. drivers for the township, occurring on their drug tests as required. They paid one bill, one small bill. They talked about the possibility of Pleasant Township possibly needing to kick in for indigent veterans for burials at Township Cemetery. Jim reported on the, Jim Davis, reported to the township, he goes to our meetings, too, progress on the water plant. He reported that. In April, they're going to start trapping the squirrels, live trapping them, and then they're going to be set free on the Darby, what is it?
Darby Metro Park.
Darby, yeah, Darby Metro Park in, that's associated with Patel, correct?
Yeah, Patel Metro Park.
You've all heard of the movie Free Willy? Well, this is Free the Squirrels. And none of them are going to be hurt, as I understand it. So they're going to try to at least get a handle on the problem. Not that it's going to be a cure-all, because the problem has existed and it will probably continue to exist, but it's mating season, and they're hoping to be able to trap them and, you know, get them at least...
Next meeting is?
And the meetings are always the first Mondays of the month.
Next, okay.
So whatever...
Next week, then.
Yeah, Monday.
Anything else to add to her report? We have ordinance 2017-2, adopting procedures and methodologies for the payment of water and sewer bills. I want the motion placed on the third reading.
You have that motion?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, the motion made and seconded to place ordinance 2017-2 on the third reading. This is just the third reading. Roll call vote.
David?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
My next motion is to adopt ordinance 2017-2, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Diane?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Yes.
Our next ordinance is 2017-4, designating a downtown business district in the village of Mount Sterling, placing it on the third reading.
You have that motion, sir.
I'll second.
Voting on the third reading of ordinance 2017-4, roll call vote.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Ordnance 2017-4 for adoption.
I'll give you a motion.
I'll second.
Second. David? Discussion. Roll call vote.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes.
Roundtable, if anyone has anything for roundtable. David?
Yeah, I like to say, I know we talk about that torn night, native sirens, but it's so great to have. That could be one day when we hear that, we need to take shelter, so thank God we have that signal that works good. And like I said, you never know. I don't want to end like Dorothy and end up in awe, so if we don't know one way or the other.
We set the alarm off every Wednesday. Many years ago, that was a signal that everybody stopped to close businesses on a Wednesday. And we also used to use it to alert everybody that there was a fire, either in town or out of town, or that we were shutting the water off. That siren is getting some age on it, and I think, John, we need to have some inspection done on it because 85, somewhere around in 1985, 30-some years, and I don't know it's had any attention or not. A little town called Homer, their alarm didn't go off. So anyway, I don't want that to happen here.
There may be some funding from the central dispatch and 911 fund to help us maintain it.
Good. So I'll...
It sounded pretty good last night.
It hit sound...
Forty minutes, it held up real good.
See the call board in the sheriff's office when that went on.
The mayor brought up on the used to test at 12:00. When I was in the fifth grade, we had a substitute teacher that day, and I told her it's an air raid, she says, oh, no. And it almost worked, and almost got us out of school.
Mary Lou, roundtable, anything?
No, except when we first moved to town, when they would turn the siren on that they were going to shut the water off, one November evening, I'm just running water in the bathtub like crazy. It meant Santa Claus was coming. But I had plenty of water. Yeah. People were strange.
Well, since we were talking about squirrels a little bit ago, I do just a comment, and if anybody has a suggestion, I was contacted by a resident in the village who has a large pine tree in their yard and apparently has usually 15 to 20 buzzards or vultures in it. It's creating quite an issue because of the droppings and the young children. And wanted to know if I had any suggestions on what they could do to get rid of the birds.
I do.
You do? Great.
Buy a boat horn or a foghorn, whatever.
Okay.
And set it off. You'll run everything out of your yard.
I have... Well, worth the information. Thank you.
Well, we're having that issue. They're on their way to somewhere, and we have them in the spring and in the fall.
Hey, Rebecca, another thing that works, get a plastic owl. Buzzers are afraid of owls.
They say it's kind of a big...
They won't work well.
Believe me, the foghorn's better.
Thank you.
The foghorn will work. But they're only here a short time because they're on their way. If you know the story...
To Hinkley.
Right.
Yes.
And they'll stop here, and then they'll stop on the way south in the fall. Okay. Diane, anything on roundtable?
No.
All right. Are we finished? Then I will adjourn the meeting. And now, since we're adjourned, if anyone has a wish to speak, now we'll entertain them. We'll let you entertain them.
I want to thank Jack for updating the website. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I can't get it out here. I want to thank Jack for updating the website, and you can go back and see previous sheriff's reports and previous meetings, and he did that great job. The rest of the stuff, I can't say.
All right. All for Jack. All right. If there's no one else wants to talk?
I do. I don't know if I have to walk up to the front.
So we can hear you.
Yep, you can hear me. I lecture to 280 kids, so you can definitely hear me. I just wanted to kind of bring up, because I know that there's a lot of stress with people, right? And a lot of this Joe Johnson stuff. And one of the things, since I've started sitting on meetings, and I've missed several this year, that I think some of the residents, including myself, are still slightly frustrated with, is that you feel like we're out to get you or blame you for something, when what we're asking you to do is help us manage our money, right? The taxpayer money. The fact that we, there's almost an attitude in the council that we should just like, oh, it's in the past, let it go, we totally got it fixed now, it's great. There are some people that are going to be fine with that explanation, absolutely. There are going to be people that have no problem with that at all. And then there are going to be other people that find that insufficient. And what I would like to see, and it sounds like you guys are doing, you know, getting the books together, I know John, we haven't had a lot of problems since John's taken over. And there have been other things that it's like slowly seem to be at least communicating that are having the websites up are great, being able to watch the videos, absolutely are great. But there's also still this, like this rift that I don't know if, maybe it'll just be up for election next time, and the rest of the population can speak, that's part of what that process is. But there's also kind of, I feel, a need to just kind of say, asking people to be held accountable is, if I had done this with my taxes in the past, I'd be in jail, right? So there's an ethics side of that that we're asking you to be accountable for. And if we seem a little bit annoyed or frustrated, it's not because you personally have totally, you know, messed with us personally. It's because we want our community to be stronger. I would love, it's important, I would love a grocery store. And these things cannot come to pass until, you know, we kind of work out a couple of things, and you involve as many people as we can. So instead of being frustrated with us, or with the press, or anybody else who's trying to get this information out to the herd that may or may not be paying attention, but has to, you know, kind of work with us to be, I don't know, more cohesive and conversational. And it's not, so this is not to say that the stuff that you're doing on finance isn't great. And I know Diane had brought up putting the ledger basically online to the state. I'm hoping that's still on the...
The open checkbook.
Right.
Okay.
I hope this...
Thank you.
Yes.
We're working on these things, but we have to take one step at a time on these things, too. The grocery, as it looks now, is out. There's no building available. We're still working on it. We haven't given up. West Jeff has a Kroger, so to speak, complex, and they have a pharmacy in there and something else. We haven't given up on it. We have area of land that will be made available to us if we can get the promise of a grocery. So we're a third of the way there. But as far as the I.G.A. is concerned, that's out. We hate to say that. One lady I talked to says it's going to cost two and a half million, and she wants no part of it because she's in that business and she's working, I better not say where she's working, but anyway, she has stores in the area, convenience stores beyond what we have here. I mean, a full-pledged market, so to speak. She doesn't want any part of us, and she rudely told me that. So that's it. She will not put two and a half million dollars in this area because the buyer has, so she says, the buyer, the grocery buyer, has gone, they've gone to Courthouse, Circleville, whatever, Meyer, and so that does, we're still working on it. I'm not going to take her word for it. Okay. And as I said, we are disclosing whatever we can as conveniently as we can. So we're doing our best with what we have. We'll take it from there. Okay, come on up to the mic.
Thank you. I'm Tom Ward, everybody knows who I am. I'm a resident here, and I've tried to speak during the council meeting. One of the times that I tried to speak at the council meeting, I was told by yourself and...
That's right.
...a manor, I could not speak.
That's right.
Sheriff was here. And every time somebody has tried to speak during the council meeting, one time, everybody, their audience, everybody, we read it right, that, no, you can't talk about this, no, you can't talk about that. How are we supposed to get you any information if we're not allowed to ask questions during the council meeting? You say, the only way you're going to address council is after the council meeting is just, or has adjourned, okay? Everything is adjourned, nothing goes on record. What we have to say, we want on record. We're like, we paid this. Every penny that I paid since I've lived here was stolen. I think I deserve, not just me, but everybody here that pays taxes, at least an explanation is to apply all these years, years. Does a lack of oversight? No, I don't buy that. I do not buy that. Somebody didn't do their job. If I let the law handle their part, the voters will handle the rest. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, anyone else?
My name's Becky Martin. Just curious again, if we are, if you guys have considered filling the empty council seat that's been open for whatever, a year. I know people, people in my circle want to know why it's sitting empty, being held for some reason. And just kind of to reflect that on what Thomas and Margaret both said, the little rift that Margaret was speaking of, you know, it's not us against you, it really isn't. I love my community, you love this community, but the snarkiness, the comments, I don't know about, like, I'm driving the same car, I don't know what that means.
That means I'm not stealing from your coffer.
Well, I never accused you of stealing from my coffer, and I don't know that any of these good people have accused you personally that, you know, the thing we want, you know, we don't even necessarily need details about Joe and everything he did. We just want accountability. You're our elected officials, you were put there to look out for us. And we were let down, no two ways about it. Whether it was completely him on his own, or a lack of oversight by you, whatever happened, it happened, and you were the people sitting there when it happened. So instead of anger and rudeness towards us, we feel it just should be, I mean, owning it, and then maybe we can move forward. It's really hard sometimes to move forward when people are in denial, and that's all I really have to say.
I would like to answer that, Mayor, in the effect that it's always easy to say, the school board, the council. We're talking about a rift with people that may exist, and I have been painted with the same brush. And I'll say it again, I was not here. So should I just meekly sit and go, oh, oh, no, narcissistic, or bulldozer, or whatever the H else? I wasn't here. No, I don't own any of this, and I don't feel any need to apologize for it. And if there's a rift between me and anyone else, it's public. I don't have anything to hide, I would, you know, oh, well, she said she wasn't there getting... That's like me blaming a student for ripping up my classroom before he ever got in the room. Well, come here, Jeremy, look what you did. I wasn't in here. Did I do that for 30 years? No. That's what I take offense at. I take offense at being lumped together and being summarily dismissed as having any kind of intelligence at all. And I will summarize by saying, January of 2018, when all new people are sitting here, for the most part, I feel sorry for them. I'm just trying to make it as good for them to hit running in January as I know how to do. I've been on council school board since 1972, and I'm still driving the same car.
Okay.
Okay, that's a perfect example right there. I'm still driving the same car. We're not here to steal your money, people. Well, if y'all pass the land, we just don't come save your life, people. I mean, those, nobody needs that, especially in the middle of all this. If I've got a row, everybody knows it, if I make a code, I'm no fool. If I say bulldozer, that's what I said was a bulldozer, but we get so much conflicting information up here, it's really hard to understand what's going on. One meeting, you had somebody say, we don't want any of that property, we don't want tools, we don't, the village doesn't need it, so get over it. Then two seconds later, somebody says, well, it might behoove the village to keep some of this property, not have to buy it later. Um, you know, you get people saying, well, we're gonna have interviews, we're gonna post this job to the fiscal officer, 'cause we're not getting anybody. Next thing you know, you read the paper, well, there's interview scheduled. That's not what we said at the council meeting. And then you wonder why people say, well, what goes on behind closed doors? How do we know what's going on? We never know. No, nobody changed the rules. Yes, we changed the rules. Well, some things were admitted, but for good cause. Well, what was, was admitted wasn't of any real significance, and, well, no, we didn't change anything, we didn't do that. Then there's an explanation of the things that we did change, and a few months back, a year ago, everybody was hustling, well, let's change this, how did it come out of the rules? Who did this? Who was responsible? When did it happen? Where was the oversight? Who let this happen to the rules? So there was things put back in. But you said, we didn't do it? No. I mean, I've come up here and apologized because I've said things, I've done things, I own up to them. You know, I'm my own worst enemy, like I said before. But you guys are too. You just can't admit it for some unknown reason. I don't know. You're human beings like everybody else. It's a thankless job. Nobody wants to do that job. You're wrong no matter what you do. And it's for nothing. I mean, it's for free. You don't, you know, nobody's arguing that you get paid a big amount, but it's not an us versus them. We just get frustrated, and you guys act like we shouldn't be frustrated. Well, you're not entitled to be upset. Just let us do the job, we'll take care of it. Well, somebody didn't take care of something. It happened, and there's nothing wrong with saying it happened on our watch. You know, but don't, don't put us down because we're upset and you think we should sit there just meek and mild, let it roll, don't say nothing, we'll take care of it. That's, I mean, there's just too much that comes out in one meeting. I mean, it's like, you guys don't talk to each other, you don't really know the answers, or you're doing it intentionally just to confuse people, but it's about as clear as mud.
Well, if I could, you know, talk about the rules specifically, 'cause you say it's gone back and forth, back and forth. Well, unfortunately, there's been a lot of misreporting in the newspaper, which we have nothing to do with. I tried my dead-level best to clarify for the taxpayer what's in our rules.
But Diane, you know, I was at a meeting, and I was at a meeting, but Mary Lou said, there's a habit that happened. This wasn't like this when I was here before. Who changed it? Who let this, where was the, where was the solicitor?
The only thing, the two sentences that seem to have everybody wrapped around the axle.
It's typical, it's legal.
Well, but it's right out of the ORC.
Right.
It's out of seven thirty-one oh five. That's the ORC. People can Google that. You can't take that, those few sentences out of the ORC, which were put into our rules, okay? And say that that equates to us giving Joe Johnson, you know, license to go on a freewheeling felonious spending spree.
Well, I think the judge has made a decision.
But wait, let me finish.
I don't think that's us. I think a judge has made that decision. I'm not a judge.
But it's, it's not good when the public has a misperception. That does paint the whole kettle black. I mean, everybody.
Misperception when I come to these meetings, and I see it amended. I try to ask, I need to try to get a copy. What was amended? Oh, nothing changed.
Hey, look.
Okay, we gotta put this back now. Who, who amended this? Where did it go?
I'm trying to clarify to you right now.
Yes, it did.
I'm trying to dialogue with you right now, here. I'm trying to help you wade through this. And as far as that goes, we have our rules ordinances and resolutions for the past four years, Bobby, that are sitting right out there on that glass table out there.
I know.
They're out there every day. Anyone that wants to come in can sit and go through them, they can come in here in a quiet space, look at our rules of procedure for thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
You say that, Diane, but when it happened, I tried to get it.
And sixteen.
I got an old copy. I didn't get the new copy.
And the rules of sixteen, Bobby, are good for two years.
I know.
So out there, you've got the rules of procedure for thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, which is good for two years, six years' worth. You're not gonna find anything in our rules of procedure that we gave away the keys to the bank to Joe Johnson. You aren't gonna find it there.
There were changes, there were changes to the rules.
You can, but they were minimal. They had nothing to do with the question and point, which is the quote out of the newspaper that we.
Specifically. I said, he said there were no changes. Yes, there were changes. Yes, there were amendments.
But the point that I clarified two weeks ago was, the change, I had Mark, our solicitor, do it. We pay our law director. He clearly specified what those minute changes were. And if anybody wants to juxtapose thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, they can see that what, you're talking about something that's, there's no there there in terms of any culpability or wrongdoing, or, you know, approval of Joe Johnson's nefarious, felonious, um, thirty-plus felony counts. We didn't do that. We did not do that, but that's what people are saying on Facebook.
From that, there was no.
That's what people are saying on Facebook.
People weren't watching them a lot. People weren't watching things.
You know, but.
Right, that's the bigger point. Nobody was watching it. Nobody was watching. It doesn't matter that changes of rules are not, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is gone under your watch, and that's the main issue. No one cares how it happened, what little rule.
Well, when somebody's doing felonious acts that we don't know about, how are we supposed to know that, that Joe Johnson's gone amok with a credit card and taken his, you know, going on joy rides and going to motels and things like that? How on earth were we supposed to have known that? We didn't know it.
People were doing the checks and balances. People were doing the reviews and the initials that you're doing now.
You heard, you heard, you heard Mary Lou Styrison sit here and say tonight, nobody saw any credit card statements.
I've also.
You know why, Bonnie? Because they were shredded.
I've also heard the finances are tight. They are buttoned up so tight.
Yeah.
Okay, but then why do we have overtime out of control?
Computers were scrubbed.
How come we still have, no offense, John Martin, ten thousand dollars he can do without.
We're not even seeing bank statements now.
Hey, Paul, and I wanna say something also, is that, that's why I'm doing this finance work session. This will be the third one in about just over a month. I intentionally do work sessions to open it up to the public, because I want everyone who can attend and to listen, yeah, and there are.
No one comes to the meetings, Finance Committee meetings. He does because he's reporting on it.
It's not, it matters. You guys are doing stuff now, you're trying to get things in order.
Do you come to Finance Committee meetings now?
That wasn't what had happened.
That's true. But you can understand the process. You can at least learn to start understanding the process. It, process, it's to your benefit.
I've dealt with budgets. I had my own budgets I was responsible for with the state. I know how, you know, different money, different funds.
I'm glad we're having this conversation, because you know what? You know yourself, you've come to probably more, uh, village council meetings in the time I've been in office, you know, a lot. But how many people are here, Bobby?
I know that, and I, I don't know how to get them here. I don't know how to motivate them.
I don't know how to either, because.
They go out there and talk and run their mouth, but they don't show up, they don't do anything. I got nothing for them, if you don't do it.
I wish more people would stand up like this. I'm glad you are.
People are afraid. We've had several, you know, several administrations being bullied and threatened, and people are intimidated.
Since Joe's gone. Do you feel intimidated right now?
No, but one of the most rude people on council has got up and walked out, because she didn't have time to listen to us peons talk about anything. That's the rudest thing I've ever heard. It is.
Pardon me, I'm going on now.
And you weren't, you weren't elected. No one blames you for what happened with Joe Johnson, but you are rude, and you, it's, it's inappropriate.
Nobody's singling anybody out, particularly, we're just saying.
I think this could go on all night.
I think the more dialogue, the better.
I'm going, I'm going to call a stop to this.
Just recognize this as legitimate, people with concerns, you know, and valuable input sometimes.
I appreciate your input. I always have.
Well, just, if you use time.
If you're talking, we, we are.
Mr. Ward. Sir, we're adjourned, so that's all right, I'm good with this. And I am thanking you for finally putting everything together properly. That's good. The damage is done, and we, the taxpayers, are the ones stuck. So therefore, deserve number one and answer. We realize more cases are still going on. I don't wanna point those out, but the law will handle that, great. But that does not justify all those years of that going on, and no one, not one person catching it until after the bomb's off.
I agree with you. I couldn't agree with you more.
And if I did my part, Mrs. Elway, I'd get in jail as fast, it would be funny.
I totally agree with you.
Okay, and another thing.
I'm not gonna make excuses for anybody.
We're sitting here, and people can read papers, and we can read what the judge says, and we can read what the prosecutor says. And then when you stand up there and you make a comment, I demand apology from the judge and from the newspapers. I don't wanna be nowhere near them when they come in here, 'cause when they come in here, they've got the authority. You don't demand an apology from a judge. The judge knows what's going on. He's got all the details. He's still redoing research. He's got the prosecutors out there doing stuff, okay? Let the law do their job, but in the meantime, we as residents do deserve some answers. We should have the right to stand here during the council meeting, like we are right now, asking questions and being, instead of being shabbied down like I was first time. The first time, I was really nice. I offered to sit down and let somebody else speak. You know how many laws was violated, man, doesn't that speak? The civil rights are being violated. You're not violating mine anymore, nor any of these other residents. Now, that man can throw me in jail, he can tell me to walk out of here. The council meeting's over. But what I'm gonna say, and I mean what I said, we deserve answers, and we'll get them, now or later, when we will get them.
I couldn't agree with you more. You do deserve answers.
I sit down here.
I couldn't agree more.
One council meeting that just walked in, Jack Neal, you're aware of this, put Facebooks up there, the residents took us a threat, I took them as a threat. I notified the sheriff's department. To this day, my one good backup, when I brought it up here in council, what happened? The council member makes it look like it was the residents threatening her. We have never been a mob mentality. This is the first time, the first time since all this came on, that I have ever raised my voice, and to anybody to raise their voice. We go across the street, we talk, we're calm, but we're a mob. Not a mob, but we demand answers, okay? There's a whole lot more questions going on. You're gonna have to be answered. Not me.
You all have an opportunity, Tom, for one thing. You can always run for these seats. That's what you need, basically do.
A seat sitting in, I was tipped over three times. My name's on the ballot, not that one, not that one, and not that one, okay? Hey, fine, the mayor has the legal right to put anybody on there that he wants. Fine, I'll run again. Other residents will run. I'm good with the election process. That's the way it works. I'm not good when the ones who are sitting on council doesn't do their job. I'm not good with that.
Talking about the records, when we get them back, you come in, I'll show you how he did it. I won't hide anything from you. They have all of our records, and we cannot respond to any of this because of the investigation.
All you gotta do is bring them over to the council meeting.
I can't because they.
Well, I understand that, no, I do understand.
You come in, I get them, you come in, I'll show you. I'll ask you to find them. The five of us sitting here, we saw records, but we did not see what was happening because it was not recorded, and there were no reconciliations. And we saw nothing.
Five, what, what's been that, four years, five years? What was it, four years?
About three or four years.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars could not be caught?
Yes, it was never recorded. I'll tell you why. You know why?
Well, they're not, we're trying to.
We're finding out why.
Why?
If I gave you my credit card, you could use it.
I don't give my credit.
Now, wait a minute, you listen. I gave you a credit card and you used it. Someone else keeps the book. And when that bill came in, they were able to pay that bill without the clerk or recording it. We had not reconciled for five years.
Wouldn't you want to see your statement? Wouldn't you want to see your statement, though? You gave it. Wouldn't you want to see the statement, uh, the credit card when it came in?
No, we didn't see it.
We didn't know where the credit card.
But we should be.
They got it every month.
They should be held accountable.
That's the way it is now.
You know, but they, they opened it with no resolution.
If I do.
There's nothing that approved.
I, I don't.
With one signature.
One of the walls says, it's a rental house, okay? Fine, a rental property. So if I go out there and I buy something.
Who opened it? That's yours. You're the bookkeeper and the liar.
Exactly.
But this was too difficult.
Okay, now you're the bookkeeper and the liar, on behalf of me, and me.
That's where we had it, but it was not done that way. I can show you. I can show you.
Without councils, without councils' knowledge.
All I'm getting at is, that's what I say.
The bank opened it. No, the bank opened it.
We're trying to build a proper position, but that should have been done a long, long time ago.
Now, you were talking about why people don't, I hate to be screened at. I hate to be treated. I sit up there and watch people come in here and.
But I would never want it.
They glare at it. That policy is probably there.
I, I have to glare, I have a part of hearing. I will be glad, and I listen, and you know, people now, they're talking, I try to, now, they're talking. Okay, so the thing is.
You're right, when everybody's. You'll see what we're going through now.
That's how you're gonna get that response back. If you're rude, if you guys are rude to us, we're gonna get it right back.
I haven't been rude to you. I know.
What happened to me that one night here, that was totally not.
The reason I did not want you, we were told not to discuss any of this.
But that was, council, the council meeting was already over. That man was there, the newspaper man was there, and the sheriff was there.
Could be. I'm not gonna say I'm wrong or right, but when we are under a lot of pressure, very much pressure, to answer your question about, um, filling the seat, we talked about it in the next meeting, you weren't here.
And what was the answer?
It is up to the mayor to make the appointment.
I already knew that, yeah.
That's the only answer.
He said that he chose not to fill it.
He has the right to either fill the seat or not fill the seat. It's the mayor's decision.
What would be a good reason not to fill it? What would be a good reason not to fill that empty seat?
Council decided earlier.
No, that's not right. It's the mayor's decision.
No, it's the mayor's decision.
It's the mayor's decision.
It was always the mayor's decision.
That's right.
To fill it or not.
Yeah, and that's what the ORC says, that in this condition, he can decide if he wants to step back into it after the next election. And that's what the big holdup is.
The council said earlier.
That's not right.
Council did not make that decision, you did.
No, council members, didn't we all say in a meeting that we're gonna leave it open?
Actually, at the, when we discussed this not too long ago, Lowell, we brought up the ORC where we, it said it was your decision.
And what?
And it was your decision, and the whole thing had to do with whether or not you wanted your seat back after the election this fall.
Whether you wanted to fill it or not. You never made an actual decision in a council meeting that you were not going to fill it. So, the question has always been a little bit in limbo. I don't care which way, you know, if.
I don't either.
I, I did, I wanted to fill it immediately, because I think six heads are a lot better than five.
On and on and on.
But, I mean, you have the right not to fill it.
That's right.
I mean, that's, and.
And if he wants it back after the election.
It was left.
Two meetings.
You have the right.
Right.
It's still Lowell's decision.
So potentially, you could just ask every meeting.
So when you, I couldn't hear you.
Right.
I said, like, they're saying, like, the decision was never, like, affirm, I'm not going to fill the seat, has never been decided. You just said, it's my decision, and, you know.
I haven't decided yet, is what he said.
Well, I've heard that.
And the meetings I can't come to, I do watch on video, so, um, you know, I, I did not think that there ever was.
It was on the videotape of February thirteenth, and I know that because my husband spoke at that meeting to clarify.
About the ORC.
The legislative process in the ORC for filling a vacant seat. So, my husband spent many hours on research doing that, by the way, just to help everybody understand it. And Mark agreed with his.
I guess it just goes back to war, the community's lack of trust and faith in council is because we feel like there's some underlying reason. Like, you've got your Fab Five, and you don't want anyone to get in there and, you know, influence the vote or influence politics or anything.
Cause it, it's still got kinda, you know.
I just can't imagine, like Diane says, six heads are better than five in every situation, I would think. Or Indians should be better.
Um, more opinions should be better, you know? We are very diverse and we should have a diverse council. And I, I think it's a shame that there's an empty seat. I think people want to be heard and they want to contribute to, you know, our community.
We don't have any problem with them contributing. But most of the people that I'm talking about, and the council will agree with me on that, we're here, you're there, you're the enemy and we're the enemy.
No.
We're not.
No.
But you said, "I am so uptight, you would not believe."
I, I understand that, I understand it would, it would be a,
And so the rest of us.
A very thankless job because
It is.
Usually, you probably only get recognition when it's in a negative way. You know, because if things are going smoothly, you know, people are fine. But unfortunately, we've had a huge, huge, huge blow to our community.
We know that, we do, great.
And, and you know, we feel like, instead of, it, it does feel like we're on two different sides. And we absolutely shouldn't be, we shouldn't be gaveling, we shouldn't be, "This isn't appropriate time to talk." I mean, you should welcome and, and be grateful when we come to these meetings and we want to contribute. You should, you should, it should make you happy. It should be part of the healing process.
You've heard tonight, are you happy now and have we settled anything? See, that's what I'm saying. We heard you.